Well, good evening and welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM. I'm calling this meeting of the Common Council, the City of Wausau to order. We'll begin tonight's proceedings with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please press yes to take roll call. We have 11 members present.
And I have no proclamations tonight, but I do have a recognition. On Saturday, April 6th, the fourth annual Dream Big 2056 fundraiser, which is sponsored by the Mung American Center, was held. This annual event was created to recognize and to sponsor numerous outstanding Mung students through awarding educational scholarships. One of the highlights of the evening was a presentation of the Stanley F. Staples Person of the Year Award. It is an annual award that is given out in recognizing a person or an organization who has contributed significantly to the Wausau area. Mr. Staples, who this award has been named after, had been a managing shareholder at the Ruderware Law Firm for many years, and has contributed greatly over the years to the Wausau area in many numerous ways to the betterment of our community. This year, the Stanley F. Staples Award was given out to two individuals that have made a tremendous and positive impact to the Mung community of Marathon County, especially in education. The award for 2019 was shared by two Wausau-area individuals, Pastor Yeo Yuen from the Cross Church and DC Everest, and Wausau City Council District 10 Alderperson Mary Tow. Congratulations to both of them on sharing this award and for the many contributions to our population and our community. Congrats. And then, moving on, we have a presentation tonight from ARP. And at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Sam Wilson and Mr. Darren Wisnewski forward to make your presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Common Council. My name is Sam Wilson. I'm the State Director for AARP in Wisconsin. It's my honor to join all of you this evening in what is absolutely a celebratory event, to honor Wausau as the fourth entrant into the AARP network of age-friendly communities in the state of Wisconsin. There are a lot of people who are deserving of recognition this evening for their efforts to make tonight's announcement happen. I want to thank both the Common Council and Mayor Robert Melkey for your leadership in recognizing the importance of this work for current and future residents of Wausau. I also want to thank Chris Schock, Director of Planning, Community, and Economic Development, who initiated the first conversation with the AARP Wisconsin office about the possibility of Wausau joining the Age Friendly Network. After our first few conversations, it was clear that Wausau had a multi-pronged approach to community development for residents of all ages that made the community's entrance into the Age Friendly Network what we call at AARP in very technical terms, a no-brainer. I also want to make special mention of Darren Wisnewski on the AARP Wisconsin staff, who's taken up the mantle of livable communities work in our state and has been a great ambassador to communities such as Wausau in their own journey to livability. I also want to recognize Wendy Savage, a member of our Executive Council for AARP Wisconsin, who is joining us here today in the audience as well. For those of you who are just hearing for the first time about Wausau's efforts in the area of age-friendly and livable communities, I want to tell you a little bit about what an age-friendly community looks like. It's a community that enables people of all ages to actively participate in community activities and treats everyone with respect regardless of their age. It is a place that makes it easy for older adults to stay connected to people that are important to them and encourages an environment of healthy aging. In 2012, when the concept of age-friendly communities was first discussed at AARP, there were only 15 communities in the entire country that committed to adopting age-friendly principles into their community planning and development processes. Today, due to the success that communities have seen as a result of using the age-friendly framework, nearly 359 communities across the country are now incorporating the assessment, action planning, and evaluation process of the Age Friendly Network to improve the lives of their residents in meaningful ways. So, how is it taking off in Wisconsin? In addition to the network of age-friendly communities such as that that Wausau is joining as the fourth community, as mentioned prior, AARP has initiated a challenge grant program to incentivize quick-action, age-friendly, and livable community projects. In the first two years of challenge grants in Wisconsin, we've had over 90 applications and awarded eight community grants totaling just over $75,000. I'm pleased to report that we're just starting to evaluate 2019 applications, and we're excited to have nearly 80 applications this year alone from communities across the state. Often, when we speak to communities looking to join the Age Friendly Network, we need to emphasize to them that membership in the network does not mean that the community is currently perfectly age-friendly or even a great place to retire. What we do emphasize is that membership in the network means that a community's elected leadership has made the commitment to actively work towards making their village, town, city or county a great place to live for people of all ages. When I look at the city of Wausau's emphasis on creating resilient community networks and I talk to partners like the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Central Wisconsin, who are already deeply invested in connecting older adults in the community in which they live, I would be hard-pressed to find another community in Wisconsin that is as well-positioned and committed to embracing age-friendly principles than right then where we are this evening. With many communities, I reflect on what membership in the Age Friendly Network could do to help a community reach their full potential. In the case of Wausau, I'm excited for what the entire network of age-friendly communities will learn from all of you and the leadership you can provide to other communities in our great state and around the country. I congratulate each and every one of you for the hand you have had in building the community that you have today and for your commitment to creating an even better community for future generations. Thank you to all of you for your leadership on behalf of AARP and our over 845,000 members in Wisconsin and over 38 million members nationwide. With that, I'm pleased to present Mayor Melkey and the Common Council the official dedication of Wausau as an Age Friendly Network community and a letter of congratulations from the national leadership of AARP.
It's just another positive thing that's happened, another positive accolade for the city of Wausau in the last few years, so thank you. Okay, and we do have two folks registered tonight that would like to speak. Can I ask Ms. Judith Miller to come forward, please? And if you could, please, limit your comments to three minutes and your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Sure. Judith Miller, 903 Kick Bush Street. I appear before you again tonight in order to speak about the Thomas Street Road Reconstruction Project. I remain concerned, as do many citizens of Wausau, about the level of contamination that may well be distributed throughout the city and the air by excavation of the remaining amount of Thomas Street. While it is clear that the DNR is ordering more air monitoring and more tests, it was also clear from the meeting on March 8th, while not stated but clearly implied, that the city probably intends to go ahead with excavation before those test results have come home to roost. I would urge you strongly to wait until those test results are in. In talking to the Soil Waste Management Director for Wisconsin's DNR, it was clear that he did not completely understand the concern about dioxins and other petrochemical residues in the soil and perhaps in our air being redistributed around the Thomas Street area. My concern is also that, as I understand it from that director, that the city of Wausau intends to take the soil to the Marathon County landfill. I would not be too happy to think of our unknowingly, while the tests were in process, contaminating another site. Again, I've had conversations with both Matt Thompson and the Director of the Soil Waste Management Program for the Wisconsin DNR, and they remain concerned, Mr. Thompson is concerned, about how the city may proceed. As I understand it, your only soil disposal program is to wet the soil down and transport it to the Marathon County landfill. This does not seem sufficient in that we do not know the actual level of contamination or the danger to the citizens, and I would point out to those actually engaged in excavating the site as we proceed. Again, I would urge you to wait until those test results are in and we have further evidence of what is actually going there. We all hope that it's safe, but we don't actually know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kalau, please. Welcome, if you could, to three minutes and your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Melkey. My name is Kalau, and I live at 724 Park Avenue. I just wanted to speak to the council about the diversity committee that the mayor has created, and I'm really happy to see that this is the direction that the city is taking. I think it's a long time in coming, and I'm really happy to see it, you know, in a resolution form. I was looking at the agenda, at the packet, and some of the committee members I know, for example, Paige, she did a great job at Martin Luther King Jr., the event that we put on, and also Tony Gonzalez, he's a good friend and he's a great advocate for the Latino community, and Fong Moa, I know he does a lot of good stuff for Mung American Center, David Dion, again, another, he did a great job at Martin Luther King Jr., and then Tom Rao. I don't know Tom Rao, but I did see that in his biography, he was involved at St. Andrews Church, and I have a warm spot in my heart for St. Andrews because I was at the church one day, and I looked up and I saw a photo of me as a little child at the church, and I was like, what is that, you know? And some of the members came up to me and they said, that's you when your parents came to church here, because a lot of the congregation members from St. Andrews, they sponsored a lot of the Mung refugee families, and so my dad was one of those families. So, St. Andrews has, like, a special place in my heart. Even though the diversity committee is something that's needed in the city of Wausau, a little caveat here, even though I think it's a move in the right direction, I kind of feel like there's a rift in city council right now, and it's about, you know, Mary. Mary and I, we are friends. We spent the weekend, you know, in San Jose with other strong women from, you know, they're city council members in California, and we had a very, you know, powerful weekend connecting and everything like that. So, I feel like this resolution should be put off until the rift is mended. I really feel like there isn't a clean way to move on with the diversity committee as long as the rift between city council members isn't fixed. So, my ask would be to fix the rift, please, and then move on with the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to consent agenda, it's been requested by Mrs. Tow to pull two files, file number 190401, the minutes of the previous meeting from April 9th of this year, and also file number 18-0805 from the Finance, a resolution approving the purchase of parking pay station shelters from Wausau Canvas. We will move those down on the resolutions and ordinances. Otherwise, for the rest of the consent agenda, starting with file number 190406 from SISAM, an initial resolution setting a public hearing regarding vacating and discontinuing North Second Street south of Short Street, and ending with file number 08-0609, a resolution authorizing temporary easement agreement for the athletic park from Parks and Rec. I entertain a motion to accept that. Motion by Mr. Gisselman, second by Mr. Peckham.
Motion passed unanimously.
Now, moving on with those two different files, we'll start off with file number 19-0401 from the Council for the minutes of the previous meeting dated April 9th of night this year. Yeah, let's see. Just lost my train of thought. I entertain a motion to accept that. Motion by Mr. Peckham, second by Mr. Nutting.
Begin voting. There we go. Motion has passed 10 to 0 with one abstention.
Okay. And then, moving on with file number 18-0805 from the Finance Committee, a resolution approving the purchase of a parking pay station shelters from the Wausau Canvas. I entertain a motion to accept that. Motion by Ms. Herbst, second by Mr. Smith. Mrs. Tow.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for pulling this off the consent agenda. I sit on the Transit Committee along with Pat Peckham and Becky McLehaney, and we often have discussions in the Transit Committee about how we're losing revenue or we don't have enough resources to support running Saturdays. And we also talk about providing shelters for some of our most-used routes, and we struggle with trying to find the means to really replace some of our rundown shelters that are out there. And it amazes me that on the agenda tonight, we made a significant investment in our new pay parking system, which I appreciate the new technology and what it will offer some of our enforcement officers as they're going out there looking for those who are in violation of their parking ordinance. But I see this $30,000 being invested in seven shelters to protect the, you know, pay-it-yourself parking, and then the additional comment about our law enforcement looking at putting cameras within those shelters, you know, for whatever reason. And it makes me think about the Transit Committee and, you know, those who actually, you know, wait out there in inclement weather, and there are some areas where we don't have shelter, or we have some areas where there is a shelter, but it's probably been there for the last 20, 30 years. And I know that one thing Greg shares with us all the time is that, well, you know what, maybe we'll just think about it next year. Or if we consider putting in shelters to replace the current ones that are there, we have to figure out who's going to maintain that, and there's going to be another expense and another cost. So, I just want to share with all of you that tonight I would be voting no on this because I think that we have greater needs, and I'm probably the one who should be sorry that we haven't brought any action forward to the Common Council to consider that, and I hope that that's something that Pat, Becky, and I can change. But I wanted to, that's the reason why I asked for the consent agenda or that agenda item to be pulled. Thank you.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. The parking pay station shelters really are part of that, like Mary said, the larger project that we funded, you know, largely from the parking fund, and it makes sense that we would protect that equipment from inclement weather and continue to make that investment. But that said, I think that, you know, her statement's well-taken about transit and some of its needs, and, you know, we've kind of struggled in transit in general, you know, wanting to expand the system with what kind of is a chicken-and-egg conundrum as far as, you know, how do you get bigger if you don't have the ridership? And so, that said, though, if transit has capital needs, whether it's shelter replacement or whatever that might be, in the Finance Committee, we welcome CIP requests from transit just like any other department. And so, as we rank those needs and figure out what we can fund, you know, I would certainly welcome a request for a metro ride if they feel that there's something that they need that we've not ranked before. That process starts in July, and if there's a request that they'd like to make, we'd like to hear it.
Mrs. McLehaney.
Thank you. I just want to, you know, say that in talking with Greg Seibert, who is our Transit Director, he is getting together, CIP is ready. He knows it's coming up, and that's why he is getting all that information and he's getting it ranked, so it will be coming soon, at least, you know, some of it.
Okay, we have a motion by Herbst, second by Smith. You may begin voting. That motion has passed 10 to 1.
Moving on with the rest of the resolutions and ordinances, file number 19-0408, a resolution of the Capital Improvement and Street Maintenance Committee, authorizing a driveway in excess of 44 feet for 141 West Thomas Street exiting onto South Third Avenue by Colby and Colby. Committee action approved 3 to 0. The fiscal impact will be $2,692.04 for WPS to relocate electrical facilities. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Mr. Gisselman.
Motion has passed unanimously.
File number 19-0410, a resolution of the Economic Development Committee, approving the sale of 1940 and 2001 North Second Street building and property or parts thereof to Bridge Community Health Clinic or their assigns for the expansion of clinic operations, relocation and expansion of community gardens and additional parking. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be plus $88,000. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second? By Mrs. Rasmussen. Ms. McLehaney.
Thank you again. I have a question in reading the packet and watching, you know, the video of what I could see on the meeting. I have a question about the cities, besides selling this, does the city have any other investment needs that needs to go into these properties for the Bridge Community, for any kind of driveway or anything like that? It was ambiguous.
Mr. Schock, if you could come forward and explain, please.
So, yeah, there was dialogue about establishing some shared parking areas. We would work on a shared parking agreement with Bridge Community. Those parking facilities would not be necessarily exclusive to Bridge Community, but rather multifaceted for the vicinity.
Is that answered? Okay, thank you. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that earlier today, the Community Development Authority Board voted to approve sale of the third property in this same row of properties. If memory serves, Mr. Schock, if you can help me here, is it 2101? Was that the address of the third property?
2102, yeah.
Okay, 102. That was approved today by the CDA Board, and really, this project that the clinic is looking to do is a sort of all-or-nothing kind of thing where they need all of these properties to, you know, put all the pieces together, if you will, and it looks like a really good project. I do support it. Thank you.
Motion by Neal, second by Rasmussen. You may begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 18-1109, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving the 2019 budget modification for the Station 2 construction and award the contract to the low bidders. Committee action approved 4 to 1. I do not have the fiscal impact on that. Go ahead and say that for the record.
The increase in the budget is 854,771.
I entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Herbst, second by Mrs. Rasmussen. Mrs. Tow.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if Chief Kudrow, oh, she is here. Was the doors originally a part of the design?
The doors are a part of the design, but we did put an alternate bid in there for different types of doors. They're not the horizontal doors that raise up and down, they're doors that open vertically, so they're a little more expensive, so we thought we should obviously make that very transparent, that they're a little more expensive, although they do offer additional things that really make it more cost-efficient and effective for us.
Okay. And Chief Kudrow, I've always been very supportive of this initiative, and I still am, and I guess my ask is, is this a must-have? I know it's going to, it's gained efficiencies for us, it's widely used, I guess, design or doors throughout other fire stations throughout the state of Wisconsin. Can we make do if we didn't move forward with this today?
With the alternate?
Without going with the alternative.
Yeah, I mean, we can, certainly. I think the, and the whole council didn't hear this, but we discussed this a little bit in finance about the reason for the alternate bid, is the horizontal doors actually require more maintenance, they fail more often, and lots of times you can't see them because the door is going up and we're trying to get out. So, there are times when big vehicles hit doors and they damage buildings and doors and actually vehicles. So, with this type of door that opens horizontally, actually opens vertically, it's a folding door, it's always in the purview of the driver of the vehicle, very low maintenance, in fact, no maintenance at all, the way that it's mechanically designed, very little repair with these doors. They can, in emergencies, when they do fail, they're easy to open and close where horizontal doors have to be lifted, these just have to be pushed open. And actually, Marshfield did a, because they went with this type of door, and they actually did some research on it, and they said that the four doors that they put into their station, the payback would be in about 14 years for efficiencies as far as loss of heat in the winter, because they close in a matter of seven to eight seconds as opposed to 14 to 16 seconds with open and close.
Okay, and then my final question, either you can answer this or Mary Ann. So, including the alternate, all the alternate door designed here, there would be an additional $152,000 for the architectural design to be added?
No.
So, it's a 290 plus the 152?
No.
Or is that completely something different?
Yeah, that's something different. It would just be the 290.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And actually, it was brought to my attention, and I'm glad this was brought up. I was petitioning for the four front doors because those are the emergency doors, so those are the doors that we want to open quickly, number one, and number two, we want them in full view of the driver. The back doors, however, I've mentioned that we could do the horizontal doors if the Finance Committee wanted to, that's what we introduced this to to begin with. That alternate bid was actually for eight doors, so even if we would go with just the four doors, it was brought to my attention after the fact that this was for all eight doors, so the front and the back doors, and even if we would go with four doors, just the front doors, obviously, we'd lose some efficiencies on the backside, but I think the big thing with front doors is just to keep it in the view of the driver and to make sure they can be opened efficiently if something fails.
What's the cost difference between going with the front four with the vertical and the back?
Yeah, the alternate bill was 290, so it'd be half of that, so 145.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McLehaney.
Thank you. I have some questions. We're looking besides, this is for 853,000, so we're not just talking about the doors here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We're looking at that, what I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at overbid. This was, the builder says what we want is going to cost, minus the doors, about 500,000 more, correct? Approximately?
Yeah.
850 minus 290, I'm just kind of...
That's correct.
Yes.
That's correct. I get it, yeah.
Okay. Have we, before coming here, asking for this money, have we looked at this plan at all? Is there anything that we can do?
No.
To lower the price to match the budget?
You know, that's a really good question, and we've done everything. We've decreased the size of the building by about 1,200 square feet. We've, this is the smallest building that Wendell Five Bugles has ever built. We've changed the design construction of the roof to a cheaper style. We've decreased the mechanical bay, or the mechanic's room that houses... We've decreased the mechanical bay, or the mechanic's room that houses all the HVAC stuff and things like that by hundreds of square feet. We've taken that price down as low as we can. The efficiencies, there's hardly any hallways. We've done everything that we can to get the price down. And interestingly enough, you know, as you heard earlier today from Eric and Alan, you know, their bids are coming in 15 to 20% higher than they had anticipated. And I think that's because of the economy and all the work that's going on. And with the bids coming in, there were some areas that only got one bid. And obviously, we're taking the lowest bid. But I think everybody's bidding high because of all the work there is out there. And that's one of the reasons that we're asking for an increase in budget.
Okay.
Dollars.
To reiterate, and this was brought up earlier for the project over on South First Avenue. Yes, the good news is the economy is coming back, which is wonderful. The longer we wait, though, and that other project is another perfect example, we keep putting this stuff off, we keep putting it off, and it's ended up costing us more. And in this case, it's 15 to 20%. That road project is the same. It's just something to put out there for folks to think about it. These are needed items, the infrastructure items. And you folks have toured these facilities and seen that. That was brought out on purpose. They need to be updated. It's not just a Band-Aid approach. It's just not to ignore it. It's got to be completed. To put it off any longer, I think is irresponsible. I realize the cost. Believe me, I fully realize the cost. But the longer we wait on these projects and put it off, the more we're going to pay for it in the long run. And I think most residents understand that. Next up, Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. This is, I think the mayor's right on this, and I guess I was just going to, I guess, camp on to that a little bit by talking about the cost of waiting. And, you know, having been here a while, I recall that it was a number of years ago, and I want to say it's maybe been four or five years already, when we were starting to talk about needs in the Fire Department and we were starting to talk about CIP projects. I think it was Mr. Gisselman who told us years ago that we should have already been on top of Station 2 and its replacement. And, you know, of course, hindsight is 2020, and we had many other priorities that we had to rank up. And we made some painstaking decisions, and we did not move Station 2 forward, you know, I feel as soon as we probably should have now. But those other projects wouldn't wait either. And so we were faced with that conundrum. But the cost of waiting, I mean, the longer you wait, even if you put the project on hold and wait a year and rebid it, you're going to have the exact same outcome. And that's what we're really bearing now is the cost of supply and demand. And, you know, that labor is scarce. And so, you know, being that we're in that situation, I hope that we will not only approve the budget modification for the overage, but I hope we will approve it with all eight doors, because I am concerned about the efficiencies of the conventional door and the maintenance on the conventional door. We've had some problems with doors at Central, and we just don't need that on a new facility that the public is paying for. And I hope that when the facility is done, that we'll host a public open house. We'll let taxpayers come and see our new public building, because it's certainly something that we are to be proud of, and so are they. But I hope that we support the budget mod and that we proceed with all eight doors. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the resolution, it says that the new doors are going to add about $70,000 in increase in debt service. Is that a one-time 70,000 or is that each year?
It would be each year, and it's not just the doors. It's the full impact of the overage.
Okay. All right, so do we have a breakout? I'm sorry that this is put, that the doors were put in the same resolution, because I can't support the doors. I'm sorry. I've been involved when I was a police officer with the firemen. Maybe it was a low-tech system, but when their door was all the way up, a horn sounded, and the guy knew the door was all the way up. It's really low-tech, but it didn't cost 290,000. I've been a big supporter of the Fire Department. Anything they need to do their job, safety equipment so on to keep them safe on the job. But I just can't support 290,000 for some doors, which should, you know... I don't think it'll be a 14-year payback either. I don't, I just don't see it. Thank you.
Mr. Gisselman?
Just to test the City Council, I will make an amendment to the proposed resolution that we go with the four doors, understanding, Lisa, your effort. But I think we should maybe test the City Council with regard to the four versus the eight doors. I guess I'm both ways on this, but I think that the debate with regard to the four versus the eight doors, for vertical, I think we should at least have a vote sending whatever ways it's best. But I think we have to at least give the City Council that opportunity. So I'll make a motion to amend the resolution so that the vertical door, only just four vertical doors would be included in the resolution.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Smith?
One last point. That 70,000 a year over 20 years works out to 1.4 million. Just in case. 70,000 sounds small. A million four, we're talking some serious money here. Thank you.
Whoops.
Ms. McAlany?
Do we have what the two, how much the debt would be for the 290? You know, again, I agree with Mr. Smith. I wish this was separated, because it's always conflating issues. But the 853, if we were just going to do without the doors, what would the increased debt service do? Do you have any guesstimate?
No, sorry.
Mrs. Tow?
With all fairness to Chief Kudawa, I know that her 200,000 is a smidge of that total 800,000. Can we get some information on what's the rest of the other 600,000? And just to do some simple math, if our investment is an additional 800,000 and the payback, the math that you did, Dennis Smith, that'd be about 600,000. But I don't think that's just all towards the doors here. So with all due respect to Chief Kudawa, can we learn a little bit about what's the other 600,000?
So the 4,500,000 was just a number. You know, we had been, we had established a budget back when we had Five Bugles come in 2012, or I don't know, a long time ago. And then I would just adjust that for inflation on a regular basis. So I think, and then, I think when Five Bugles was coming the first time recently to do another evaluation to make sure that that still was the preferable site, they gave us a range at that time. So I think my inflated numbers were something like 3.9 million or something like that. They said, "Yeah, you better adjust that to 4.5 million." So that's what we did. It was without drawings. It was without any feedback on true construction costs. So that's, you know, we developed this budget last fall, so that's the number that we have. So then, if you look at the last sheet on your resolution, they had developed an itemized budget of 5,55,000 based on, now, they had exact drawings, they had maybe some information from other bids that they had either the year before or something like that. And so now, of course, on bid day, we had firm numbers. Those numbers that fall below the project construction total, of course, some of those are pretty firm, and some of those are still a little less firm because it's for furniture, things like that. And those will be bid out at some point, but haven't yet.
Okay. And just to note, just some simple math again. Based on the 800,000 as today, we would have missed our target mark by 20%. So in the future, just for the common council, we should probably expect that things should be padded anywhere between, you know, like 18 to 20%. That's just for future knowledge. Thank you, Mary Ann, for your information.
And if I could add, I think this is an unusual season as well. I think that, you know, contractors are, number one, as I think Lisa mentioned, they're overemployed. They have a lot of places they can put their workers, number one. And number two, they're very particular about the jobs that they bid. And when they bid them, they bid them high, because they know that they can bid them high, because the bid numbers are down. The number of companies that are actually bidding are down. So then they can take that chance, because they don't need that work. They'll go somewhere else and bid for another job. So it's very competitive, but it's very competitive high. So I think that's one of the reasons for the 15 to 20% increase, because they know if they don't get this job, they'll get another job.
And please remember, these bids were put out last fall when we were told it would be longer. So, Mr. Peckham?
Yeah. Amateur arithmetic. If you take half the cost here of the 290,000 for the door, and I'm just ballparking it, but if you take half of that and say you're only going to do four doors, that's a sixth of the total price. So if you knock a sixth off the 70,000, you get, instead of a 70,000 annual obligation, you're down to 56.
I'd add too, that's an estimate, because, you know, on sale day, the market can be completely different than it is today. And so we're using, you know, the estimates at market time and, you know, recent sales, things like that.
All right. With no further comment, we have a motion by Gisselman, second by Neal, to make an amendment to the original resolution of the Finance Committee to put in the option of only four doors versus eight doors. And you may begin voting. That motion has passed 6 to 5. Just give me a moment, please. And now we'll vote. It's still thinking. There we go. Now we'll vote on the original item as amended. Okay, in the original motion, we had a motion by Herbst, second by Rasmussen. And you may begin voting. That motion has passed 10 to 1.
File number 17-1109, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving the 2018 budget modification for the recycling fund. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be 20,000. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Nutting, do I have a second? By Ms. Kalbach.
Begin voting, please. Motion passed unanimously.
And respectfully, I would like to remind the council, we will be losing some members at 7:30, so if we could move forward. And that would be to suspend the rule on D as far as transmission of committee business to council for the items marked pending committee action. A two-thirds vote will be required. I entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal, second by, not everybody at once, please. Mr. Gisselman, thank you.
That motion has passed unanimously.
A resolution creating the mayor's welcoming and diversity and inclusivity committee. This is for the resolution of the common council, creating that committee. And I guess we will take a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, do I have a second? By Mrs. Rasmussen. Mrs. Tow.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I might take a little bit, so if I may, from my fellow council members. I want to share that there's a lot of great opportunities that are happening in our community today. Things like what used to be called TOWards One Wassa, which is now One Wassa, which has gained state attention, where two weeks ago, we had a TOWards One Wisconsin. And our model with the One Wassa was actually praised and asked to be represented in Milwaukee. I want to share that, that that's important for us to know, that there's been a great opportunity that has gained lots of momentum, that's been right here in our backyard, created here in the last couple of years. They have their own body of officers. They have their own bylaws that are in place. And I'm incredibly proud for those who have contributed to bringing One Wassa together to where it is today. I also want to remind all of you that there is a diversity commission with the Marathon County, which the city of Wassa was a participant for the last 25 years. Why the decision was made to, you know, come off of that collaboration with the Marathon County, I don't know. I wasn't here. But I would love to see how we can collect on all the great things that have already transpired in our community and really be a strong advocate and leader and co, I should say co-leader, in collaboration with some of these great organizations, organizations that are being supported by our UW system. I, so I don't understand why we want to recreate another diversity committee, commission, organization. When I take a look at the packet here, it seems kind of light to me. There seems to be some purpose, but how it's worded, where it says, you know, "The city of Wassa desires." Desire means that, well, you could take action, or you could, quite frankly, you don't have to. And I talked to some of those individuals that have been on the appointment, which is on the next agenda item or the next file. And some of them were actually concerned that they weren't even, they didn't even know that there's already a chairperson that's been identified. So I think there are some, there might be some miscommunication or maybe lack of communication to some of the individuals that have been sought out to be a part of this committee. I am also concerned that it hasn't even been three, four months, that we haven't even been able to sit down and have an honest conversation about my concerns. And yet, we have, we're asking for a committee to be created to have a desire to be welcoming, to offer diversity and inclusion. But yet, I haven't heard from anyone from City Hall to have any kind of sit-down discussion about my concerns. And I think my concerns were voiced a while ago. And I think that I shared the opportunity with the mayor and with leadership here to, "Let's get together and do something." But I haven't heard anything. So I ask all of you, I'm not asking you for an apology. I'm asking for a conversation, for an honest conversation. And if we can't get through that, how do we expect to have honest conversations with our community, with this diversity committee? And why can't we join other opportunities that are already out there doing great things? And why do we have to invent our own? Thank you.
Mrs. Rasmussen?
Thank you. This isn't really about reinventing the wheel or redundancy with programs that are already making an impact in our community, you know, some of which have been more active than others. I think that the county's commission has been, you know, perhaps less active than One Wassa has, and I think One Wassa's made some great inroads. But that said, at the end of the day, we want our community to be, you know, as welcoming, diverse and inclusive as we can possibly make it. But at the same time, the City Council also accepts the insight and recommendations of a number of advisory committees. And so in creating this effort, which Mayor Milkie has brought forward as a positive thing, it really is a community initiative at the city level and, you know, designed to advise us on issues where there may be relevance. And it's not to adjudicate complaints, and it's not to, you know, settle conflict between people, but it's really a think tank of sorts for how Wassa can be more welcoming to new residents, regardless of who they are or where they come from. How Wassa can be more diverse, how it can be more inclusive. And, you know, a number of you are already familiar with the Bike-Ped Subcommittee. The Bike-Ped Subcommittee was kind of created the same way. So when we rebuild streets, when we look at infrastructure, we ask for a consult from the Bike and Pedestrian Subcommittee. Are we as bike and pedestrian friendly as we can be? And are there other things we can do to make that better? Same thing with the Public Art Commission, which is rather new. When, you know, we are, none of us are experts in public art, but we put people on it who are, who have thoughts on that subject to advise us, you know, in an advisory capacity. And this is really that same thing. When there's an initiative where, you know, there's relevance for a committee like this, their work can happen in parallel with the organizations that already exist in the community and, you know, not necessarily duplicate or override those efforts, but act as an advisory commission or an advisory committee for us when there are initiatives that, you know, that insight could be valuable and could help us create better plans and, you know, undertake, you know, some of their ideas. And that's why the commission is comprised largely of citizen members with one council member on board. And so in thinking that through, the mayor thought he wants it to be a community effort generated from within the community, but to offer us some insight and some recommendations. And, you know, it really is generated, I think, to be a positive influence and really to give us that, just an outside point of view, you know, on some of those things. And, you know, as we work to market Wassa and as we work to decide how we will reach out to different age groups and different demographics to increase tax base and get our citizen base to grow. We want our city to grow. We want our city to grow. How can those initiatives be a part of that growth? You know, it's beyond advertising and marketing. And so the insight of a group like this could be valuable in that outreach. You know, are we appealing to everybody that we could be appealing to? And are there things about Wassa that make it less attractive or less welcoming? And, you know, are there things we can do to quell that? And I think those are the questions that, you know, we ask ourselves that we'd like some insight on, and I think that's where he was going with the formation of the committee. I mean, not to put words in his mouth, but in our discussions, that's kind of where, where we came down on the model was that the Bike Ped Subcommittee was kind of the role model, because it gives us that deeper dive into issues that are, you know, relevant, but not necessarily hashed out in our standing committees, but it's opinions that we need to hear.
Mrs. Tow.
Well, I think that the name of the committee is a little deceiving, because if we're looking to get solicited feedback about how we can, you know, make Wassa great, I think that could be done in multiple different ways. And I think we've done, you know, community surveys, listening sessions in the past. With all due respect, I know I'm talking and there's other people having conversations. Can we just have a little respect, please? So what I'd like to say is that if we're looking for advice and not real solutions, I don't know why we're calling this a welcoming inclusivity and diversity committee. If we really want public opinion, we have alternative ways to get that information. We are very committee-heavy already. And if we really want solid representation as far as, when I take a look at inclusivity and diversity, we can send one of our council members to be a representative with, you know, One Wassa, with the Diversity Commission, or with the YWCA, or with lots of great organizations that's in our community. But creating another committee with a very light, you know, purpose, no bylaws, I don't even see a plan. So I don't even know how, and if we want to be able to be the city that we want to be, we should be living out our values. If we're not seeking out so real solutions and we're not trying to solve problems, then I don't understand why we're creating another committee. Thank you.
All right.
No, I want to say something too. Go ahead, Mr. Gisselman.
Can you turn your mic on, please?
Oh, sure. Of course. Taking Mary's suggestion and looking at the declaratory wherashes, I think that we can look at that word desire, and I think we can strengthen it up a little bit. So I'm going to amend some of the wherashes. For instance, the first one, the city of Wassa will be a welcoming and inclusive, sorry, placing the desire with the word will. The second, whereas the city will identify the issues and barriers to equality affecting those minorities. The third, whereas the city will, through discussion and education, promote tolerance and acceptance of all people who choose to reside in or visit Wassa. I think that that gives it a little bit more of a declar, you know, and I think, I don't know if Mary was going that way or not, but I think that strengthens those statements as sort of a declaration of where Wassa, where the city of Wassa is. So I'll make that amendment.
Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Rasmussen. Mrs. Tow.
Well, I actually have concerns about the committee name altogether. So if I have to, I would like to have, I mean, I'm not making an amendment to your motion, I'm just providing feedback. I would like the committee to be called Creating the Mayor's Welcoming Committee and take out diversity, and maybe might keep inclusivity, but I don't think we should have diversity in there.
Just for clarification, do we have a second on the amendment? Rasmussen, thank you. Okay.
I guess maybe for efficiency, if we could take that as a friendly amendment to Mr. Gisselman's motion, if he'd be okay with removing diversity from the committee name, we could take that all in one vote. I'd be okay with it as a second.
Is that what you're agreeing to, sir? Okay. Did you still have to make, or want to make a comment?
I do want to make a comment.
Is it on the amendment?
It is on the amendment.
Okay.
So since Lisa made a suggestion, I'm going to insert, I think that the entire committee name needs to be reviewed. I don't, I don't suggest, you know, my earlier comment about the mayor's welcoming committee, because that doesn't sound right. But I also, I think I have a problem with inclusivity as well, too. And I would urge that we go back and review the true purpose of this committee and really coming up with a different name for this committee.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question of naming came up not too long ago, and it was my suggestion at the time, and it remains so, that for the purpose of formalizing this committee, it needed to have a, a name, if you will, that takes it through the process of formalization. And that would be, I guess, the official moniker for the purposes of that process. But I suggested too, once the group meets, that it would be probably one of their first orders of business to look at how they refer to themselves as a group. And I firmly believe it won't be the name that's in front of us today. That it's going to be a name that the group works together to formulate, that resonates with them, resonates with the community and the mission of the group. And that name yet to be determined, and I don't think it should be determined here tonight.
In order for the resolution to come forward from a legal standpoint, we had to have a moniker attached to that.
Right. But that does not mean that that would be the name that we would be using in practice.
I'll address a lot of things here in a second. So I believe Mrs. Rasmussen was first.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Neal. I think letting the community or the community members that form part of the committee form its identity and its name makes a lot of sense. It gives them some ownership in, you know, the creation of the committee as well. And so if we establish the framework here tonight, I think it can do some positive things. I mean, the initiative behind all of this was positive, and it was meant to be positive in the community, and it certainly wasn't meant to be the source of contention amongst us. And, you know, it's one of those things where we want to make some inroads and create something that's, you know, positive, that we can be proud of. So I think we should move forward.
Mrs. Tow.
I certainly want to move forward, too. I like to have good discussions with all of you. We seem so, like, prepared to be happy to, you know, move this forward, but it's still very concerning to me, concerning that we already have these types of opportunities, I'm going to keep saying it again, that are out there. And coming to the council for a resolution to move this forward so that this group that we're looking for the appointments after this, to come up with an idea or a purpose or a strategy on how we make things, you know, more, you know, more inclusion and including everyone's feedback and what we should do to, you know, tackle some of the concerns in the community and make it a more hopeful and bright community. I mean, it takes years to come up with a charter. It takes years to come up with bylaws or even a driven purpose. And I would have loved to see some of that organization, some of the conversations happen. You know, it seems like this is, you know, this is off on a whim, you know, and why didn't we start this discussion, you know, many years ago? I know that some that are appointed, that's on the file, are here tonight, and I'd like to hear from them, to see what conversations have you built, you know, with the city? And what's the driving purpose? What are your goals and what are your objectives? What are we hoping to achieve? Someone share that. And I know, Darryl, you're here today and you're on the appointment list, because I've talked to two people on the appointment list.
Darryl or Dave?
Oh, Darryl, sorry.
Dave.
Dave Deon. And they were pretty confused. They had one simple email and a conversation. So I guess I'm curious to understand how much conversation and thought process has been put into this committee, because to me, I don't, I'm not getting that feedback from those who've been appointed and not approved yet, of course. Thank you.
Let me address several of these things. One, this is something that had been talked about last summer before the incident with you, Mary. This is a positive outreach, you know, and I've said, the committee can call itself whatever. I have spoken with these individuals because they have been involved in different community initiatives and diversity issues and events, and it's a good thing. It's a conversation piece to start. One, the city of Wassa has not had a diversity training or diversity type of commission for years. We have not been part of Marathon County. I will be meeting with those folks on May 7th to give them an update as far as what we plan on doing. A lot of that, we have to have this formation of the committee for folks to come together to talk about what they want to accomplish. A resolution was put together because in order to form such a committee, it has to be approved by the council. But again, we have not had a committee like this in the city of Wassa for years. Actually, we disbanded it way before I was mayor, and I think it's a good thing to be brought forward. And talking with TOWRDS One, respectfully, I met with them back on March 6th. And at that time, you know, explaining as far as the ideas and the situation, at that time, TOWRDS Wassa, I hadn't done anything in almost a year. Now, that doesn't mean that I don't support them. I've been a part of that group. I've been a part of Naomi, part of the WIPs, part of the YWCA classes on diversity training and implicit bias. This committee had been talked about being formed last summer, because I thought it was time to bring something back. And it's supposed to be a positive thing, a discussion. It's to include everything, because, you know, after the fallout, I want to see what happened by what your claims were. And really, the city of Wassa has not been hurt. Now, it's a positive thing to bring this forward as far as a discussion. A chairperson has not been selected. Mr. Neal's been graciously accepted that he would represent the city, but really, it's ultimately up to the committee and this commission how they want to be moved forward. I brought this back, back in January, because I was at an event at the YWCA, and an African-American lady turned around after the presentation, which was excellent, and her exact words were, she said, "I hear such good, nice things about you, but your city does not make me feel welcome." My heart sank. Racial things have come forward that I think need to be addressed in an open and honest way, hence the reason why this is being brought forward. Now, this is a council matter as far as your claims and accusations from last year. We have reached out to you, Mary, on several occasions, and I'm not going to get into a knockdown, drag-out. This is not the intention for all that. It's supposed to be a positive thing as far as unifying, bringing people together, and to have an open, honest discussion and dialogue as far how to make things better here in the city of Wassa and make it more welcoming to everybody. You know, I'll be having this conversation on the State of the City on Friday, but it's as simple as this, no matter who we are, if you're here to contribute in a positive way, everybody here is welcome in the city of Wassa. And I don't really understand why you're making this such a negative thing. Go ahead.
I didn't make this a negative thing. I started off with the viewpoint of there is great organizations that are doing great things.
And the committee can decide real quick if they want to join with those folks.
Can I talk? I think my light is turned on so that I can have, respectfully, I can speak. I've listened to you and...
I've listened to you, too.
You know, you don't have to make it personal.
Go ahead.
I think my light is turned on. I think I'm owed the opportunity to speak. I'm not making this personal. And no, I've not been reached out to. I still have an open records request that's not been fulfilled all the way yet. So let's make that one clear for everyone. All I stated was, there are different things that are happening in our, outside of our organization today. We could be involved in that. We could be a part of that synergy and that great stuff that's happening, that's transforming our community to embrace diversity, to embrace our differences. It's there, and we have every opportunity to be a part of that. But we're choosing, we may be choosing tonight, to go off on our own. And what does that show to the community? That we're creating another silo? Why would we do that when we have every chance? And maybe it disbanded years ago, but that doesn't mean we can't collectively come together with the Diversity Commission at the Marathon County or One Wassa. Why couldn't we send a representative to be a part of that? Why are we reinventing that? That is what I'm challenging. I didn't make this personal at all from the beginning. And I think that if we have a recording on tonight, you would be able to see that. I never once brought that up or challenged that. The only thing I asked at the end was that if we really want to truly be inclusive and have diversity and common respect, then we should be able to get through those conversations of my concerns. That was the only thing I shared.
So voting on the amendment, we do have a motion by Gisselman, second by Rasmussen, to amend the resolution of the common council to change the first three wherashes from desire to will and renaming the committee name to welcoming and inclusivity committee. And you may begin voting. Ms. Kalbach is not here, that's right. That motion has passed 10 to 3. So we will go back to... It's 7 to 3. There's 10 people. That was where my brain was going. Okay. So... Yeah. Well, one not voting. So now we're going to go back to the original resolution as amended on the council floor. You may begin voting. I'll try to get my numbers straight. All right. That has also passed 7 to 3.
Okay. Moving on to file number 190403, the mayor's appointments. This is for the committee that we were just talking about. You've got bios from all these folks. And also, too, in the point of openness and transparency, it was discovered, if you will, I had talked with Mr. Dave Deon, and he has just left. He is back. Okay. Welcome back, Dave. I'm sorry. But as far as being open and transparent, there was an incident with him back in 2004, and he has agreed to chat about that if he, you know. It was considered a misdemeanor. He is not being considered anything right now. And this is information from the police. Is anything improper, anything like that? It was considered at the time in 2004. It is from the past. It has not hindered employment for him, and people deserve a second chance, and I am comfortable with him contributing to this committee in a positive way. So just to let folks know, if there's any questions, we can address that. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting. Mr. Peckham.
Oops, we need a second, please, sir.
Oh, excuse me.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Peckham, thank you.
And as long as we're doing that, I just would like to, I guess, share that I did speak with the mayor this afternoon, and I noticed that there was an eight-seat committee in addition to a chair. And we've only got six people, but he has assured me that he is going to try to fill the additional two seats. So I'm satisfied with that effort, and I think that this committee can be as active and strong as they choose to be, and I wish them well.
And just to let you know, I did have two other members, among female and among African-American, excuse me, an African-American female, and unfortunately, they both had to move out of the area. So it's still open, so to speak. Mrs. Tow.
I just want to share with the common council some comments that I received from some of the individuals on your list here. One is considering declining an appointment, and another provide a comment that they were not aware that Tom Neal would be the chairperson representing from the city council. And another comment that shared that they just really want to be there to keep an eye on the city. So I want you to understand that.
And again, Mr. Neal is not the chairperson. That will be up to the committee as far as the discussion. Mr. Neal's representing the city. I will be involved, but only from a distance, if you want to call it that. Again, folks, this is a positive thing. It's a step forward to bring everybody together. Thank you.
Motion by Nutting. Oops.
Mrs. Tow. Let's keep it professional, please. Let's keep it respectful.
I guess that's validation for some of the racial under... I guess that's validation for some of the racial undertones and microaggressions that I have to be faced with. So, I was just worried about you, but thank you for sharing how you truly feel. I, I am still very concerned about this opportunity, and it amazes me that we want to move along and, you know, we want to, you know, be able to take care of situations and issues, but we continue to dismiss some of the concerns that's been voiced here tonight. I am, I am, I'm very disappointed in, in most of you, and, but I respect your decision, and I look forward to how this will transpire, and I wish it well. But, but I hope that this committee comes back with some actionable items that's gonna create some big positive changes in our community. You have a big task ahead of you, and I look forward to seeing all the great things that will be happening. Thank you.
Mrs. Tow, you're welcome to join us at any time. Okay.
Motion by Nutting, second by Peckham, to approve the mayor's appointments as presented. You may begin voting. Ms. Malkahany, there we go. That motion has passed 7 to 3.
Moving on with file number 021005, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving agreement for purchase of a fee acquisition of land at 141, 143, and 145 West Thomas Street. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be $5,150. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting. Do I have a second? By Mrs. Rasmussen.
Begin voting.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion has passed 7 to 3.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving agreement for purchase for a temporary limited easement and compensation at 201 West Thomas Street. Committee action approved 5 to 0. Fiscal impact will be $13,575. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst.
Just a moment, please.
Begin voting. Motion has passed 7 to 3.
And file number 14-0704, a joint resolution of the CISM and Finance Committees, authorization to proceed with the 2019 Wisconsin DOT First Avenue Reconstruction Project and the related budget modification and financing plan. Committee action, CISM approved 4 to 1, Finance approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be a project bid of $5,406,760 plus $540,000 of state oversight costs, a $100,000 contingency less state grant, a $560,000 for a net of $5,486,760. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, a second by Mr. Gisselman.
That motion has passed 9 to 1.
At this time, I'll open it up for anybody in the audience that would like to come forward to speak about a matter on tonight's agenda or anything in particular. Come on up, sir, if you could, and your name and your address, please. And if you could respectfully, keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I will be short. Chuck Robinson, 2221 Ridgeview Drive. I believe it was two meetings ago, at the end of the meeting, one of the councilmen over here mentioned that it was his understanding that there were some funds that were uncommitted and might be available, and he got all excited because he said he had an interesting project he'd like to pursue. Well, I'm the guy that was trying to propose a reuse for the fire station number two for the seniors, and I'm glad to hear that he had that in his mind. Maybe not. But, that's all I wanted to say. Don't forget us, please.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to come forward and speak on an item? And one more time, would anybody like to come forward and speak about anything? Okay, at this point, I'll consider the public comment closed. If I could have a volunteer read the first closed session, I'd appreciate it. Anybody want to volunteer? Not everybody at once.
I'll read the first one.
Go ahead.
I'll move that we go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, paragraph 1, Sub G, "For the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel regarding pending tax litigation involving Walgreen Company, case number 15 CV855 and 18 CV594."
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Neal.
Begin voting, please. That motion has passed 9 to 1.
And then, if I could ask for a volunteer for the second closed session item. Mr. Smith? If you could.
I recommend we, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Section 1, subsection E of the Wisconsin Statutes for delivering or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding selection of a developer for the Riverlife Villages Phase 1 project.
Do I have a second by Mr. Neal?
Begin voting, please. Motion has passed 10 to 1, or, excuse me, 9 to 1.
And we will come back into open session after that discussion. We are adjourned right now for closed session. I don't have a file number.
It will be, okay, he's mentioning there is no file number for the first closed session discussion with Walgreens. We will add that into the minutes.
All right, then. It's a resolution of the common council approving the proposed agreement for settlement of lawsuits between the city of Wausau and Walgreen Company for property tax challenges for tax years 2015 through 2018. These are case numbers 15 CV855 and 18 CV594. Committee action approved 9 to 0. Fiscal impact, it's a tax reimbursement to Walgreen Company for $61,375.59 for 2015, $18,640.54 for 2016, $19,236.03 for 2017, and $22,588.52 for 2018, for a total of $121,840.68. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mrs. Rasmussen. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst.
Begin voting, please. That motion has passed 9 to 0.
And for the second closed session item that we had discussed, there will be a press release issued tomorrow morning stating the thoughts and opinions for tonight. And with that, I will entertain a motion for us to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Neal, second by Mr. Nutting.
Sorry, that's that order it doesn't like. All right. It just, it locks up. It says it's not working. All right. Begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.